Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. It is seven P M. We believe be given the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. So we'll begin with public comments. Hands up. Okay. Correspondents?
Yes, and it's in your packets.
Excuse me, I didn't know how to raise my hand.
Okay. And you're you're for a public comment?
Yes.
Okay, so if you would go ahead and introduce yourself and your address and. Go ahead.
Okay, Brad Colts, One Fairchild Drive.
All right, so what's your comments, Brad?
I would request that the board consider if there are significant changes to the water rate plan that was presented at the public hearing. Actually releasing the information about what those changes are and holding another public hearing rather than just going into a vote. I think there are a lot of folks who don't understand a lot of the side issues around this, and I think it would be unfortunate if if the board just went ahead and just sort of plowed through and 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 passed a rate change. Given some of the information that was discussed at the public hearing and to my knowledge, not publicly discussed since with any potential changes that I believe you folks were going to consider. So I I would just hope that tonight's meeting would be a discussion of what those changes might be and that that might actually present itself for another public hearing on a matter that is quite frankly, very polarizing to most folks who were were actually in the water system as rate pairs. So that's my comment and and my request and and I thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comments? Okay, see none. We have one of these correspondence. And I'm not going to read all of it now because I think we'll bring up the points in the discussion because it does relate to the water rate change and it's from from Brad Colts who we just heard from and we'll we'll hold that. It's okay for everybody. First off, I move we approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes from December fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Do you have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll try your minds, all in favor. See if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I move that we approve the public hearing minutes from December fifth, two thousand twenty-three regarding water ratings. Any discussion? See now, I'll try your minds, all in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. I move that we approve the public hearing minutes from December fifth, two thousand twenty-three regarding transfer station rates. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll try your minds, all in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries. I move that actually I'll let somebody else make the motion. I would accept a motion to appoint myself, Dan Carter, as voting member of H R R A.
I'll make that motion.
For a second? So this was just a holdover. We should have done the last meeting, just neglected to. Really? Yeah, pretty straightforward. Now, so try your minds, all in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
If you vote on the meeting minutes for the special town meeting.
And the pro bridge.
Right by. Thank you.
Stand.
Yeah, stay on there. I checked the wrong one off. I move we approve the special town meeting minutes from December fifth, two thousand twenty-three regarding the sale of Twenty Trobridge Drive. Any discussion? Say none, all in favor, see if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It's pretty catchmanning. Okay, so next up, we have Nancy Ryan here, the Chair of the Public Site Building Committee. It's her assuming commission to share the quarterly update. Nancy, you have the floor.
Thank you. So Mary did send around the outline that I put together, basically detailing our agenda as it's been for the past couple of months. So first item is the police station training range. Downs Construction has completed all the preliminary infrastructure work on the range and we're waiting for perm dates from Action Target for when they're going to send their crew to install the range equipment. That's all been delivered. And we're also waiting to hear when they're going to deliver the makeup area unit. We've gotten a preliminary approximate date, so to speak, the first week of January, that they will bring that makeup area unit in. But Performance Mechanical, which is a local contractor that's going to be hooking up that makeup area unit, doing all the installation parts of that through Action Target. Has they've been on site already during other prep work. They're ready to get going and they want to get going, so they want to get that unit there. It's got to get picked up over the range and onto the pad, which is in the back, using a crane. We need to set something up in advance. They didn't like where we're back. Work lived. Oh, anyways, we had to send it back and we've been working with them since then to try to get it delivered. We do need to notify the police department too to make sure they're. We're staying within the budget parameters with eight thousand plus in our contingency and about six thousand plus in the construction.
Brad, what were what were the costs of those change?
Heating and cooling in the space.
And were there any other changes or that's all?
In that in that unit?
No, in in general, in terms of, you know, we have, you know, roughly eighty-four hundred dollars left and you know, contingency.
Right.
You know, when we, I remember when we had the discussions, we thought we were going to be well below the one point four million.
Right.
So I'm just curious like what changes, because I'm a little bit concerned with only eight thousand left in contingency. I mean, if everything goes perfect and, you know, we're not going to have any more overages, but you know, we all know the chances of that happening are slim. So I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what the overages were and and what what were they? Like eight thousand, okay, I understand wanting to keep you know, the conditions that we don't have problems and stuff like that, you know. Where where are the other overages occurring to get us like kind of off track where we thought the project was going to come in? Because I remember when we first discussed, it was nine hundred ninety-nine thousand.
Right.
And, you know, some of us said, no way, never going to happen in a million years.
Right.
We got ready to go to referendum. We thought it was one point two million, but then it was, you know, let's approve one point four, even though we don't think we'll ever hit it.
Right.
Because.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just curious, like, I'm not, I'm just for my and like when people ask me, you know, I just want to know, like, what are the overages, like to eight thousand, okay, I get it. What were the other overages that we've experienced?
So there, I already called overages. We did have some escalation costs because of the timeframe. We had one change order that was twenty-five thousand dollars that was a change to the specific way that the unit struts, which are the metal hangers that are going to hang off the ceiling that the all the battles and such for the range equipment will hang from. There was a change on how those were going to be installed, which required just a whole different installation. Which was unexpected by us, but it was verified by two sets of engineers. This is what needed to be done.
Right.
There were a couple of, there was another three thousand dollar change order on some electrical equipment that needed to be upgraded just to the specifics of that. So it was
So.
That was recent, something that was found after the bids were put out. So all change orders are basically a change in spoke work, so.
So you have about forty-four thousand change orders and the rest of it, the ten percent would be attributed to escalation in the price of the goods.
And so there was also a of the electrical. So the original bids that came in were, didn't include electrical. There's no no electrical contract they wanted to bid on. It's considered, a lot of them said a small job and a lot of them had a lot of big jobs, a lot of stuff going on after destruction. They weren't really interested in looking at. So Downs went back out, asked a few other electrical contractors. We were trying to get some of the same contractors to come in that had worked on the building, say knew the layout of the building, where all the utility rooms were, et cetera. Some of them weren't interested, too small, so they had to get a different electrical contract and men. That was a little bit over what the budgeted amount was. That required in a way a change order to to the G M P because we were hoping, we had a placeholder in there for that amount. But once we approved the G M P, we had to add that back in because they didn't have that actual contractor in place.
How much how much were they off on their estimate?
About twenty-something thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Well, not twenty thousand over. I'm thinking, thinking how much it was and how much. It was couple thousand overs because it was a a change to the G M P by twenty-seven thousand.
But roughly, you would attribute ten percent to just cost and goods. Because right now, even with the two thousand, we're under fifty thousand and we're about two hundred thousand over, we thought. So at a hundred fifty thousand, we're talking ten to twelve percent is based on escalation and cost of goods because of the timeframe.
Some, yeah.
So.
So there was also so the only change, we had a couple of change orders that came through, not through Downs, but Action Target, and we didn't approve. There were some things that we were hoping to have included for the police department to use. And we kind of not going to do those. Some aren't going to work with the way the range is going to be used, but we did have that one with the makeup area unit to create it to be a more of an H V A C system that equal, so.
But I guess again, I'm not the, I just for my own, again, we're saying probably ten to twelve percent is just based on increase in cost of goods.
Some of it, yeah. And then there was some, like I said, with the change orders that we had.
Yeah, I took the change orders out.
Yeah, and I don't have the first change order with me.
Okay. All right, well, at the same time, if you have time, maybe you could email us just so we get that kind of an idea of the change orders would be very helpful just to know what what was changed. That would be very helpful to me. I don't want to waste too much more time on this.
Right, and we also have, so, you know, I know eight thousand in our contingency and six in the construction contingency. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it's also a smaller project. So percentage wise, it's a little smaller than what we might expect at this point, but not too long. So for a one point four million.
Two percent would be where two percent of a billion is twenty thousand. So I mean, really, if we go two percent over, we're over what the voters approve now.
Yeah. So I I think I think also maybe what you're getting at too is with respect to the change orders. You know, the 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 big controversy has centered on the H V A C system. You know, upgrading the H V A C system above what we thought was required for the building. Right, that's the the big thing, I think. Going forward, I think we'll we'll have discussions about you know, should should we as the first, or excuse me, the Board of Selectmen have been brought into that decision making, right? Because we can't I think that's where we're going, because the the big change orders were really because of a change of scope. That, right?
So I I have, so that change to the makeup area unit was eleven thousand. Almost twelve thousand, so eleven nine. I just found it.
No, I don't think, we're not criticizing. It's just, we would just like to be kept kind of in the loop.
Right.
When, you know, we're deciding to make changes that could, especially when we're so close to being over budget. I know, you know, twelve thousand might not seem like a good number to some. To me, you know, when, you know, we do projects, you know, I always tell people to carry a fifteen percent contingency because you don't know what's going to happen. It's just, that's just the way it's, you know, it led you at something. So for me, I would just, I I agree with Dan that I think it would be very helpful in the future. Maybe invite us to a meeting when you're discussing a a change order or something like that, just so we can, kind of like we did with the H V A C where we all got together and listened, so we had a better understanding of what was going on.
And 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 through the Selectmen Office, you know, Mary can let you know when there's change orders too.
Yeah.
So will you send me a good change order? You want to be?
No, I mean, you know.
I think I think.
If it's a five hundred dollar electric switch, you don't have to call us and say, hey.
Okay.
But if it's like going off the plans, I think, I mean, it would be nice just if, you know, maybe let Dan know through Mary and then he could, you know, send it out to us and let us know whether.
So I I think what's what we're saying is like when there are big change orders or changes of scope. Like, well, like, for instance, with the, it's the school H V A C, we've talked about, you know, there was talks about going with a whole chiller system and going with a plan.
Right.
You know, before anything like that happens, we we actually came to a meeting as a group and did this a combined meeting.
Right.
I think when there's big things, we want to be in the loop, but we can work on that. And then smaller things, maybe with this project, I think we want to watch because it's eight thousand dollars left.
Yeah.
But then a part of that, when they come, I can, Mary can send them out. Yeah, like this. I can send out that when we get them, so.
We have a discussion in the guest meeting where we approve change orders with Downs and the Jaccuski who's giving input. Did they foresee, there's nobody ever foresees change for development. So they were pretty sure that we would have anything else. Yeah, in a perfect world.
Everyone understands change orders and no one's saying it's not the right decision. It's just being kept kind of in the loop, so we know what's going on is very helpful.
Sure.
You know.
I have the Life Police Budget Report if you want to copy that. I didn't know if you wanted all this extra paper.
I love paper. I was a policeman. I love it. Makes me happy.
Mary, did you hear that?
Just copied on both sides.
There you go.
Nancy, I have a question.
Sure.
About the foreseen things. Action Target's been involved in this project for a long time.
Yeah.
They didn't realize that they had to do special anchoring for these.
So it wasn't Action Target. The plan for the anchoring was done through Jaccuski Ums based on Action Targets' plans that they sent. And anchoring this, the roof supports and the way the anchoring was originally planned for, after the structural engineers that the just another, in a way, change order where the contractors that were looking at putting those metal units up, the metal subcontractor were questioning the way that the plans showed the attachments. And so it got through it all, looked at it, engineers decided that they had to not just drill in, put anchors, patrol up through the roof, up into the roof, put the anchor on the roof, so that meant cutting the roof back. Now they had to put the roof back in place. So that was, the largest expense was there was no change to the structural steel. The change was the roof, and that's been all redone. It was redone before the rain started on Monday, which was a good thing, but yeah. They had to cut parts of the roof back and put it back in place. And again, yes, that question, we all asked the same question. Everybody's had these plans for months. Wouldn't they have seen that the original way that it was shown to, but we questioned the architect. You've had these plans, everybody's had it for months, almost a year. Why was there a change now? And again, they put it back on the structural steel people that were going to do the installation. They didn't feel comfortable anchoring on the way that they were on the plans, had an engineer get involved. They changed the scope. Not necessarily, well, the way, as I said, that they were going to be anchored, which is involved cutting into the roof. Yeah, and it's one of those, yeah, why didn't everybody see this?
Okay, thank you.
So again, we're waiting for some perm dates while we have the beginning of January, first week of January for the M A U and possibly the second week of January, that Action Charger will be showing up to their installation. We want to get all that done as quickly as possible because there's sort of, I mean, kind of don't want to be having that running around, moving things, et cetera. Most of the stuff's inside, some of it's still stored outside. We start getting snow, that adds issues. Want to try to get that done, although we've got piles of snow out there. So Johnson and School, Johnson School and Rockwell School renovations. The issue with the, behind Johnson was stormwater management area is, has all been resolved. That was one section of a redesign and redone. That's all been inspected by S L R and by land use. Everything's good. We paid the final invoices. So we should be like totally done with that, with about seven hundred thousand left in contingency. And again, while Rockwell went over budget, Johnson was way under budget, but the total project and most of the overage on Rockwell was abatement of P C Bs, everything that they found. Well, we had a an extra contingency and for both schools, we had a regular contingency. We had an extra contingency for abatement. Rockwell just didn't put enough in, so that got used up pretty quickly. But again, as I said, we're still under budget with the total that was approved at referendum. And the only other part of this is waiting on the Office of School Construction to do their audit. And Dr. Carver periodically checks into, you can go on the Office of School Construction and check the status of, et cetera. And it's basically listed as pending. So she kind of gives us an update now and again. Yes, it's still pending. The only issue with that and that issue, but we basically don't get our final reimbursement check until they think that audit. And I keep hearing people talk about a high school renovation and waiting on the audit for that for higher than a couple of years. I don't think it's going to take that long, but and ten years, it's not going to take ten years, although I did think it would be done sooner. They did have some questions. Questions were answered. The Bethel High School H V A C upgrades. The grant, so the grant was submitted. They had to have a cross and the budget redone. And put that in, and Dr. Carver says there's March is the date when they're supposed to let everybody know whether we received the grant or not. If it's the Office of School Construction, it might not be March, it might be later. So right now with that, we're basically on on hold, so to speak, or just waiting. The municipal center renovation, specifically the G P room lobby, that's completed and we had put a good size contingency and they're not knowing what kind of hazardous materials or abatement might be found behind walls, and we didn't really find much. We had done some initial testing and initial abatement, which was pretty much all we needed. So we had seventy thousand plus, which security, put that back into the art book funds to use for other projects. And then the locker rooms. Again, that was the initial focus of the municipal center renovations, was that whole locker room area. Doing the G P room lobby first gave us the opportunity to add some more bathrooms in more quickly. So, and I think they're used a lot regularly, but there were just one toilet in there that wasn't always functioning because it kept backing up. And that also gives us a way of looking at the locker rooms differently, where we'll need less toilets. And we might not need to do as much. There was a whole plan for jackhammering up the floor, et cetera, et cetera. I think hopefully that we don't need to do that, it'll be less costly. So we did, Janice, Chris Jenny from Economic Development did find out about that. Steve Grant put together all the information to really quickly put it in. We didn't get the grant. What she found out was that all of the towns that did receive grants had funding in place already. That's why we want to get going on the plan so we can have either some funding approved or the way that we looked at it was, and Colliers was helpful with this, we looked at it in sections. And so if we can possibly figure out a way to phase it, that way we could get smaller chunks of either grant money or some town I approved, then perhaps other grants that come. So we need to get together again with Park and Rec to look what are their needs right now, but it needs change from when it was looked at eleven years ago. And then meet with the architect to see initially what are the costs going to be to upgrade plants or update the plans. And then there's already the twenty thousand approved. We need more than that to figure that out and go up in there, having plans in place. That's, when people talk about having a shovel-ready project together, you really need to have complete construction documents in place. And while we had that initially with this, when we make changes, needing fewer toilets, sinks, et cetera, and changing around some of the storage areas, maybe not having to pull down spinning walls, et cetera. Hopefully it saves some money.
I I'll make a comment there too, because obviously I passed the grant to Janice when it happened. And yeah, we we were the only, we didn't get it because we didn't have matching funds available.
Right.
And I think I talked to Brad, I'll obviously be talking to more finance, about coming up with some sort of plan next year.
Yeah.
That when the steep grant comes around, that we have matching funds ready to go, because steep grants are half million dollars, and we've lost out the last two years.
So they didn't take into consideration the art concept in the lobby for that project?
No. No, because, well, when we when we applied for it, I don't know if she put that the the twenty grand or whatever it was.
No, there's there's five hundred.
Yeah.
So certified. Says aside.
Well, well, yeah, if we didn't vote on it, then yeah, that's the issue. Well, well, yeah, if we didn't vote on it, then yeah, that's the issue, you know.
Most of the time with a grant, you can't use COVID money with it, or whatever.
Sometimes state grants you can't, you're right, sometimes, but yeah, listen, at the end of the day, I think, I'll talk to Brad about it. We'll, we'll try to prepare as a group, that we, listen, we know we're going to be competing for that grant next year. I know we can come up with an idea of the way to do it that, you know, we get money for the general fund or something.
Do they come out specifically of steep grants at different times, like specific times?
Well, most of the same time every year, the way I understand it.
Alright.
So we, like I said, we missed the last two.
Yeah.
And now we know, now we know that if we want to be competitive, we need to have skin in the game, that's not published anywhere. But that is definitely why we lost it, and they, and they.
Right, and we didn't know at the time, but it was afterwards when they announced the grant that every single one had.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we literally watched, we looked at it together and everyone have, and I called some folks in the state, but that's either here or there, we'll be ready.
So we don't, so there, so there possibly is a way to have some.
There's, there's a way to have money approved beforehand or when the time comes up. We work closely with the board of finance.
Yeah.
There's a couple of different options that we've kind of been kicking around, and now we go with budget season, we'll be able to figure out how to do it.
State wants to see you have skin in the game.
Yeah.
They want you to be ready, instead of saying, oh, we're using COVID money, and I'll give us the rest of it. They want us to have some skin in the game.
Yeah, makes sense, yeah. Thanks.
I make a motion that we, but this is not necessarily a report, is it? I just support it, so I make emotionally accept the report, so, on favor? Aye, and opposed?
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay, so I, I make a motion for discussion, that we discuss enforcing the general statutes twelve dash one forty six A. And twelve dash one forty six B, when issuing a brewery license, it's for discussion, have a second?
Second.
On fair for discussion?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, the reason we're bringing this forward is. The, basically what's happened in the past, we've had a few folks who were past one year due on their taxes, and they've applied for. Their license for a food permit, where they help with a Department of Health. And what was happening is the tax collector was trying to, you know, go and, and stop that process. It never was really working the way it should, and we had actually some folks who, you know, were, were way behind. When we were looking at this, I, I found out that we've never looked at this as a board of selectmen as we, whether or not we would want to enforce this. So what happens is the taxes, excuse me, the statutes, give us an opportunity, if we want to enforce it. That we can literally revoke or withhold, once somebody's applying. A department license for a health department, for failure to pay taxes, water, sewer, sanitation. And we can also, we can revoke if, if they haven't paid it. The other issue is we, you know, we can do the same for anybody applying for licenses, if they're past one year due for taxes. But it's something I think we have to discuss as a board, maybe we, you know, throw out our feelings now, and maybe then take it back and think about it. But if we're going to do it, I think we have that, we'll eventually have to revoke, not necessarily tonight.
Yeah.
So that's, I'd like to put that out for discussion.
Are, are there a lot of businesses, I mean, are we talking one, two?
Usually, I, I would say probably three or four, I mean, there were, there were only a couple food places that were well behind. With taxes and also paying their fee, which is another issue, because if, if somebody doesn't pay their fee, the three hundred fifty dollars for their food license. Then our department cannot issue a license, and there's been a little bit of. I would, I would say like a grace period, which the statutes do not support in any way, and that's problematic as well. There's a handful of people that do that, but we, I think we can work on that with education, let people know in advance and communication. It's the ones who are way, way far back on their taxes that we have to decide if that's something we want to use.
If we came up with like a clear policy on it, I mean, I, you know, it's kind of like when you go to register your car. If you haven't paid the car taxes, the state doesn't, you know, allow you to register it. But, you know, I think we'd have to have a clear policy on it, like, you know, if someone's three hundred dollars off on a car bill. Is it really equal justice to, to revoke their livelihood on that, especially, you know, if they're trying. To make payments to the town, so I think, you know, maybe we, you know, need to figure something out that's. You know, as a police officer, we always use good discretion, right? So, you know, there would have to be some sort, I think we would have to come up with some sort of. Process, I think it's more involved than just saying we're going to enforce the statutes, is there appeal process, is there a vote from the board of selectmen? I mean, who has the authority to revoke it? In, in theory, I think it's, it could be very useful, I mean, if someone owes, you know. Ten thousand dollars in back taxes and they're still operating a business in town and not willing to pay it, then yeah, I can see, well. You know, you need to make some effort to pay us for us to continue to license and operate in town, but I. My fear would be just that individual who's really having a tough time and, you know, is willing to do something, so. Definitely not opposed to it, but I think we really need to give some define it, and maybe get some advice from.
Yeah.
On all the town.
I agree, when, when we, when we were talking about this, what, before I figured out that, you know, the, the board of selectmen never really ever approved. Enforcing the statute, and that was a red flag for me, what I also, we started talking about was payment plans, you know, things like that, like if we can do something that would help. Maybe there's a way we can do that, come up with a policy.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah, and everyone, what I'm hearing from you, there's also.
Have the show, the faith, the.
Yeah.
Payment.
But there's also, I think, with every policy, any policy we do it, we do rather, maybe we look at a amount due as, like graduated or something.
Right, you know, and, you know, first you get a warning, then you get the whatever, and then, you know, finally revocation. But I think we would have to have some sort of amount.
Yeah.
That, that, you know, so the punishment equals the, you know.
And, and I would say, yeah, the, the, the two businesses that were restaurants that came up. Were past a year due, and we did send them a letter, and we said, listen, we are going to look at this, and there's a chance next year you won't be renewed if you're a year past. So we just kind of sent a warning out to both businesses, my understanding is both of them have visited the tax collector and are trying to take care of it.
It's good.
But, you know, that, again, we'll see what happens in a year.
Will, willing compliance is always better than forced.
So, so this is a one-year thing right now, on our residential taxes, how long does she let people go before she? Puts some other tax out?
I have to.
I think it's like two years.
A few years.
Two or three years, I think.
And they're kind of discretion.
So, so you know, you gotta kind of look at that also, if we give someone a two-year credit.
But sometimes, you know, like Dan said, they have an agreement with the tax collector, where they're trying to make good.
It shows that.
Gets to the point where it keeps falling so far behind, then they.
Right, or you could get to the point where they go out of business, so you don't collect the taxes at all.
Oh, that's true. It's not lost, I mean, these are our friends and neighbors.
You don't want to put them out.
No, we don't.
They need to pay their fair share, so.
Exactly, so I'll tell you what, then, what I'll do is I'll, I'll work with the tax collector and I'll work with the town council. We'll maybe see if we can come up with some policy ideas and we'll bring it forth for a future meeting. With, definitely we'll talk about, you know, now do maybe graduated payment plan, and anything else we can think of. And then over time, you can all give it thought individually, do what you think. So we'll, we'll move, if there's no more, we'll move to the next part of the agenda. Hey, I'd like a motion first for discussion of approving water rates for FY twenty five, and if you speak here, twenty nine, so. On fair for discussion?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? So, we, we did have the public hearing, you should have it in your packet. But just, I just give it a, right? Where's the water rate?
It was on the minutes.
Oh, there you go. So, one thing, it's worth saying, and I, I was willing to include this in correspondence. But it's important to note that the Public Utilities Commission had a meeting last week and made a recommendation that. After hearing the public hearing and what folks were talking about, that they proceed with a three-year increase and, and not the five-year. And part of that is because, you know, the first three years are capital expenses that we know are routine. There's about ninety thousand dollars, in that ninety thousand dollars. We're looking for replacement hydrants at about twenty-five thousand meters at fifteen thousand, thirty thousand for. I'm sorry, meter for thirty thousand, lead lines for twenty thousand, so we know about a thousand, ninety thousand dollars a year, but we know what's going to happen. The last two years involved capital improvements that were to the Maple Well. And, yes, we have a pretty good idea what those are going to cost, because one was for a generator replacement. Let's see here, what was the other thing? Let me see if I can read it here, okay, yeah, one was. A generator replacement in twenty-seven for a hundred ninety-five thousand, we knew that it needed chemical storage and chemical containment for eighty-five thousand and a half each. And a roof replacement for about fourteen. So generally speaking, we know those last two years have bigger increases. The other part that's important to realize is that with the Berkestam well coming online, we're, we're basically increasing our debt service, that's the whole point. Now, why we also need to get through this first degree, we haven't had rates, raises in a while. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there, that the Public Utility Commission did have a meeting, and I'll open it up for discussion on, on that portion of it. I also have some correspondence to discuss once, you know.
Man, I think, you know, we did take the public's input, and we did take a real close look at it. And, you know, I've, I've read some of the correspondence, I've read some of the comments online. And, you know, Brad Haring, I know you're with us. We kind of looked at it, and year one, we thought we might be fifty thousand to the good. Under these rates, year two, we thought we were going to be ninety thousand roughly in the negative. And then year three, we would be back in the positive by a hundred and something, so when you look at the totality of it. You know, we're not talking an absorbent amount of money. No business can run on a zero-based budget completely with no money for contingency, because when we lose. On that, we borrow from the town to pay for it, the taxpayers who don't use the water. Okay, and I am a water user, I own several properties that use water. I think it's important to remember that we voted to keep our water system, and we knew there was going to be some significant costs. The Berkestam well is taking us many, many years into the future. There's some unknowns, but when we got together as our hats on the Public Utility Commission. You know, we listened to what Mr. Bevel had said at the public hearing, where I believe he advocated four years out. And then we said, well, why not just go three years out? Year one, we know we have minimal surplus. Year two, we know we're running in a deficit, year three, we're back, and then we can adjust from there going forward. Maybe there doesn't need to be another increase, maybe there could be a decrease, we don't know, but. To do anything that's going to put us in jeopardy of falling behind like we've done in the past, I don't think is prudent. And Brad, can, can you jump in and just tell me if my numbers were up? I just want to make sure.
I'm going to pull up the spread, the spreadsheet now, but while I do that, one of the other things we talked about, Brian, is that. Maybe doing a three-year makes more sense as a general practice.
Right.
And that we look at it, and we review it every year, which traditionally we haven't done yearly reviews, but I think it starts making sense. With some of the volatility we've seen recently, to start making sure that we're reviewing, alright, we're year one of three, we did eight and a half. Is that still making sense?
Right, there's nothing to say that we can't adjust the rates after year one, but I think for people's planning purposes and whatnot, this is. What you should expect, and, you know, you know, I have respect for everyone. But again, reading some of the comments, you know, I, I disagreed with and took exception to. No, no one sitting at this table would agree to a town slush fund, okay? I've always prided myself on being very reasonable and prudent with the taxpayers' money, but I understood when I voted. I was one of the people who voted yes, let's keep the water, that there was going to be some cost, and we haven't had a rate increase in how many years?
I think we, the last two years, we haven't done a rate increase, so the last time we did it was seven years ago, because there was a five-year plan. And I have those numbers for you, assuming, assuming a three percent increase in expenses. Year one, there'd be net revenue of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars to the good. Year two, the year that the debt service is anticipated to go up by almost five hundred thousand dollars. We'd be negative a hundred and fourteen thousand, and then year three, we'd be back to being positive seventy-nine thousand dollars. So if you look at the three-year run, it'd be a hundred and fifty-three thousand to the good. If expenses only go up three percent, if expenses go up four percent per year for that same run, it's thirty thousand to the good.
So, yeah, and, and that's the other issue, I mean, we were talking about the three percent, it's not just inflation. That was one of the problems that, you know, we were looking at inflation rate, when the Federal Reserve is less. This was everything, I mean, this is salaries, equipment, I mean, you can't just say, utility, yeah, we, we look at three percent, and we know that. That's a, that's an expectation. I personally had mentioned inflation, because, you know, times inflation is actually higher. So it, it made a lot of sense to do something lower than inflation, but that's not really where the three percent totally comes from. And I think the other thing that's really important about that is that, from the public utility standpoint. Number one, we're, we're still all elected officials running it, because that has been brought up, we're elected officials running it by charter. But the other piece of it, it doesn't function like the town functions, it's, it's an enterprise fund, we don't have the ability to come back. And say, you know, we're going to grab money from board of finance or whatever, you know, we go in the hole, and remember, we're already about two hundred, well. It's a, yeah, three hundred thousand dollars in the hole with the town already, so none of what we're looking at gets us back even yet. And, and the other thing philosophically is so important, I think we've got to talk about, is from the public utilities perspective, as a water company. It's, it's a very good practice to carry reserve, because we don't know what large thing can happen. I mean, you know, utilities have pumps, they're expensive items, but at the same time, all the discussions on the public utility side, I think we're aware of. This is not a money-making project, that's why we're able to do this, we, we need to break even. And nobody wants to carry a lot of extra money at the end on our balance sheet, so, again, part of this, we're taking a little risk by just. Never, because even state statute is very clear that we shall, as a group, shall. Take, eh, eh, with our water rates, make our water rates cover our repairs and maintenance, et cetera, it's a shot. Because what happens is, if you look at the statutes with like the healthcare, health part of it, we could be in a position where now, if we don't do our rates properly. We, like, we can come back to the town, the public utility can take the money, take it, always rather the general fund. Because this is, this is a community good kind of thing, it's a water utility, so I think it increases our responsibility just to run it, right? And. I think, let me see if there were a couple other things, we talked about this, the amount of. I think I talked about the capital plan, you know, what the, what the actual numbers were, so the first three years, it's ninety thousand dollars, I think it's a really good plan, it doesn't give us a lot of extra. There is no slush fund, and by the way, slush fund implies, you know, kind of implies we're doing something illegal. We're elected officials and we're doing everything correct. At the end of five years, you know, if we had gone to the end of five years and had six hundred thousand dollars, half that would have come back to the town. But I think we're, I think we're doing something really responsible if we move it up to three. I think, because we have some big things coming, we know, PFOS is the big one, we don't know what's going on with that.
Unknowns.
Unknowns.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
We have problems with some people's water, right, in, in different areas, you know, wells, is, is that going to be. Where we're going to have to run lines, or, you know, there's just so many things, we have no clue.
And, and to PFOS, we don't know what's going to happen with, with private wells.
Yeah.
They're going to go.
I want to just chime in, you know, I was for the five-year plan to begin with, but Brian brought up the three-year plan. You know, we'll just look at it in three years to see where we are, and what the needs of the, the water department is, and that, at that time.
Yeah.
I can state that we still have water lines that are in the ground from eighteen fifty, that are going to need to be replaced someday. So, I mean, there's potentials for a lot of expenditures in the future, but. Our original, when the town decided to keep the water department, we had a capital plan. Brought forth by engineers and they were talking like over eighty million dollars over the next forty years to do that project, so. There's still more to come in the future.
It's also worth saying that at the end of the three years, and Brad uh here, you could. You could check me on this. At the end of the three years, we would have a hundred and fifty three. Thousand dollars left over. And that's, you know, that's a small amount.
That's a three percent.
That's, that's at three percent with over with doing just two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in capital during that time.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Say that again, please.
If it's four percent, we have thirty thousand left at the end of the three years, correct?
Right.
Correct.
Yep, I figured.
And as a point of reference, last budget year was like four and a half. So, but we assume that was a bad year because of what happened with inflation. So we were assuming we're gonna do better on future budgets already. Um, and we're hope we're right on that.
Right. Um, you know, so the other, the other question that came up, of course, in public comment. Was whether or not we should consider a second hearing based on any of the changes we've made. Uh, I'll tell you, my particular take is that. We went and did a public hearing. We noticed it. We promoted it probably more than other public hearings. We had a very good debate. I think the PUC and the Board of Selectmen sound like we've all heard. What everybody said. We've made changes to it. Trying to be as transparent and open and really conservative as we possibly could. I mean, it's. So scary because we're gonna have to watch these rates every year to make sure. Um, I I don't feel the need to do another public here, but I will also. Put that out for discussion. I mean, it's not a motion, it's something we should honestly discuss.
I think the public hearing that we had. Um. Led us to this decision. I mean, it was good government. In practice, we listened to everybody, even though I was on Zoom, so. You know, I listened to everybody. And we took that and we said, well, you know what, maybe. People are right. We don't need to go five years out and. You know, we had a very short period of time where we had a much better idea to predict. And we still knew we needed this rate increase. But it gives us the opportunity at the end of three years. To say, okay, maybe we don't need. The eight and a half, maybe it's a three percent, maybe we don't. Need a rate increase at all because deflation, you know, there are costs weren't anywhere near we thought and, you know, we pay the town back and. You know, move move forward, so I think that. This was. A prime example of how a public hearing should work. And what happened as a result of the public hearing. The elected officials listened. We all agreed and even uh, you know, the Public Utility Commission, although we all sit on that. The other members agreed after hearing the public's input that, yeah, this would be a good thing, so. I think it was a a win for the voters and democracy as all, so I agree with you. I think we could. You know, go forward.
Yeah, I think I think it's out to, philosophy is a compromise. Because. You know, I I probably wondered that we should carry a little extra. God forbid, something major happens, like we had a. Things break, you know, but now I think we talked about with PUC, we would do an annual look at this.
Every year.
Just keep looking at it annually, and if something crazy has happened. Then we'll figure it out. Um. But I, I think we're in a good spot, um. So are there any, any further discussion for the the board? Um, Tom Villa is on. Tom, do you have anything you'd like to add as our uh? Director of the Water Department?
I I think all the comments that you've all made this evening are are all appropriate, um. A lot of the expenses that we talked about, and and I know I've been advocating, you 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 know, having building up some kind of uh. Additional, um, the one item we didn't really talk about is emergency repairs. I mean, we kind of hinted at it. We we uh as an example, we we had a main break, um. Maybe four years ago, under the railroad tracks. And and that's an extraordinary expense. I I think if I recall. Um. Everything involved with the repairs of that line um was over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, so. There's just an example of something you don't necessarily plan for that. You know, you don't have a choice, but you have to go ahead and get it, get it fixed. So, um. Other than that, I think I'm in agreement with uh, you know, what your, your take on on this evening.
Thank you, Tom. So if there are uh, no other. So no discussion. Um. I'll formulate a motion. So uh. Excuse me. Um. And I'll 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 read it here, um. Uh, I move that we uh accept. The. Water rate change uh that was. Recommended and approved by the Public Utilities Commission of the Town of Bethel, Connecticut pursuant to the provisions of seven dash two thirty nine of the general. Excuse me, Connecticut General Statutes. I think that's it, that's the motion. Um, do I need to go uh, do we eight and a half percent per year or?
Yeah, you want to.
Well, pursuant to your referencing the.
I'm referencing the public hearing notice.
And the reference.
That was recommended, recommended.
Uh, maybe just modified to the extent that it will be reviewed after three years.
Maybe the rate.
Maybe what was presented was the five year.
That's true. Thank you very much. Okay. Um, so I'm in my motion. Um, we will accept. Uh, the recommended uh water rates approved by the Public Utility Commission with the amendment of. We will go out for the three year plan, so it's covering FY twenty five, FY twenty six, FY twenty seven. At eight and a half in, uh, eight and a half percent increase. Um, across the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Excuse me, Dan, could I ask one other question?
Of course.
Um. And and may maybe check with the town attorney if you need to establish the effective date. As to when those rates would apply.
So, I I I believe since there's fiscal year, it would take, it would take effect. At the beginning of fiscal year, which is July, which means the first bill wouldn't go until December. July, August, September. I guess October, right?
Is is.
And then due, yes, they get in October, probably not. Yeah.
Brad, when were you anticipating this rate to go into effect? In January or Ja- July?
I think when we ran the numbers, it was, uh, Tom, was it for the? April col- not the April collections, it was the reading from April, but the first collection of the fiscal year?
Well, uh, a- as I'm thinking about it, if it's, if it's for the fiscal year twenty five, I think as Dan just said. It it would probably be uh the start of the fiscal year, so. Um. I know we kicked around January, but January is twenty four. So I I think July first. Of uh twenty four would be the beginning of fiscal year twenty five. I think that would probably be the appropriate time.
Yeah, and that's fine. It just adjusts that first year by the one ninety that we're anticipating. Having to be to the good side, um. Would be cut. One fourth of it gone. So you're talking. Like a hundred and forty thousand instead of a hundred and ninety or a hundred and fifty in that range.
That and that will also give uh. Laying orders, the chance to notify their attendance too, so in January, in July, it would be at a rate. So I I I would, if you want to amend your motion.
Do we um? I don't know, I mean, we we approved it based on a fiscal year, wouldn't that automatically in July, or do you think we could do a separate motion?
Oh, it would be July, because that's our fiscal year.
Fiscal year, yeah.
Our fiscal year doesn't start until July.
Right, but I think for for legislative intent, we've spoken about it on record.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's okay. Okay. Um, so I uh I move, I move that we approve the transfer station rates effective January first, two thousand twenty four. Um, that were discussed in our public hearing. Have a second?
So I guess.
We we actually have the uh, Mary, do we have the whole piece? Oh, there it is. They've just written the form. I'm looking for that.
Oh, sorry.
So I should probably, we'll go through it and amend my motion one already, so. Um, there was a lot of, of a lot of discussion about food scrap waste. Right, right, so it's a C one is uh, this town is kind of on the middle of the page. Um, the the reason that we have uh used a dollar is because in the food scrap program, it does actually save. Our residents money. Um, food scraps are the the. Heaviest piece of municipal solid waste. And right now folks are enjoying it, they're saving money. Um, the key to the whole program, of course, we're we're operating on a pilot program. We have to see if it's gonna make make sense financially next year. We are talking about all kinds of opportunities right now. Um. There's, there's the idea from West Call where maybe do something regional where now instead of paying for our food scraps to be taken away. That we just have, we take them ourselves in the Ridgefield compost facility. Or Newtown is putting one in, we could do our own, right? Manpower heavy, so we may rather go out and do it in Ridgefield. And then we can actually bring compost back for our residents, but. It'll be a lot less money overall is what we're trying to do. If it's not. We don't necessarily have to keep the government going. But I mean, right now, a dollar per bucket. Is really great for our residents, saving, it's saving the money, the people who like it uh love it. The other issue we talked about, um. We left. Furniture twenty five cents per pound. Which is what, you know, this little solid waste goes out anyway, but the issue was couches. And. We what, we basically raised the fee from twenty five to thirty five per item. And we give the opportunity for the folks at the transfer station to kind of figure out what the weight is. There's some of those huge uh hide beds. Were really expensive for us to get rid of. Um, so adding an extra, you know. Ten fifty bucks or whatever that is, I think. Ten bucks, yeah. Um. So any, any discussion on the uh? The transfer station rates?
Do we uh? Do we have to guarantee a certain amount of tonnage each year?
No.
So we have no contract for anything like that.
We've done nothing, we have to guarantee.
No, that would have to guarantee.
Just a check, I think it's guaranteed.
Yeah.
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 It it's just, you know, I I'm in favor of the uh. The motion to increase the fee, I just hope we don't see more couches on the side of that.
Right. Right, I mean, for ten dollars, I think, I think a lot of people in Bethel are really. Responsible. You know, I think our rates are better than going to. I've ta- I've taken stuff off in the back of my pickup up to Oak Ridge directly. You know, I I again, I think. It's important for everybody real high set, the reason we operate a transfer station is we're not a money making entity. We're trying to do it, we're letting the town do it, so trying to make it convenient for residents. Make it reasonable and we don't have to turn a profit, we just have to break even best we can. So I, if there's no discussion, I'll amend my motion. Um, I move that we. Approve the transfer station rates. Um, as heard at the public hearing and food scrap waste will be one dollar per bucket. Uh, fruits, excuse me, next thing here, tables, chairs, end tables, frames, furniture, et cetera, twenty five cents per pound. And couches, um, depending on the size of the couch, will be twenty five to thirty five dollars per item. Do we have a second? Without, try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Say it, they affected on that one.
Um, well, actually, we did, we didn't uh. It's it's effective within the report, it's in January.
It says January first.
Yeah. That's good, that's been a good call, good call. Right. Okay, um, I make a motion to. Uh, approve tax refunds in an amount of six thousand six hundred and twenty five dollars and sixty eight cents due to overpaying for the taxes. Hi. Pretty straightforward. Any discussion? No, okay, I'll try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone say aye, aye? Any votes? No, motion carries.
Those are all straight.
Yeah, they're straightforward. Uh, okay. We have um, uh, for discussion, flash, I'll make the motion. Um, I move that we. Approve the Bethel Fire Department's request to come from ARPA or EMS in the funds in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy nine cents. For the second. Okay, so we have before the ARPA funding, um, chief, do you wanna?
Any big questions?
Yeah. This is still one of the EMS number, right? So you have like fourteen left?
Yeah. The only thing that that we didn't have was, uh, this is the first in bag. It's much smaller than the one we we used to use, which. Those were all donations way back, um, a very kind gentleman who donated them to Bethel, so we all have a PD. So we didn't do it during COVID. We're gonna allow our people now to go back. To go into the scene with a person bag, which will enhance EMS response.
Okay. Um. Just for sake of argument, what what did the P, what did the PD have? Do they have a first in bag? Because I know there are.
PD, the PD has bags.
Okay.
And they also had turbolators. There you have the cruisers.
Right, okay.
Just don't put them for electronics container, yeah.
Hey, three is for me. Well, we can tell you.
Bring this for me, love it.
Need about three of them.
Okay. Any uh, any questions from the the board? Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, chief. All right, um. I move the, we approve the wiring and installation cost for the cameras at Stony Hill Fire Department. Uh, to come from ARPA funds. In the amount of, it's not on the motion. Sorry. Seven thousand. No, it's, so it's uh, it's Rogers Electric, right?
Yeah. It's seven thousand. Five hundred forty five dollars.
Seven thousand five hundred forty five dollars. Thank you. Go ahead, a second, sorry. Quick math skills from the uh. Selectmenters here. Okay, so, um. The reason this is coming from ARPA is uh originally. We had planned the the funds that came from ARPA, we bought the cameras, bought everything, we were gonna use one of our own. Folks to do it, our electricians who subsequently left the town. You know, we found it very difficult to find somebody who can do the wiring. So we are going to um use shock electric. I believe they were the, were they the lowest chief? Okay, they're the lowest, which is nice. It's a small amount, but we still pretty much did it for a kid processor, so. Any uh, any discussion on? Project?
I'm sorry, I have a question. Shock electric is the one you're going with?
I believe that's true, right?
That's sixty seven fifty five.
Right, but then they have uh an additional. Hold on, was there something up here? I apologize, I said shock like her. And I have, I have Rogers in front of me.
Roger.
Roger Electric is seventy five.
Wow, wow.
I better amend my motion.
Because I I I believe we decided to go with shock, right?
Yeah, I thought it was shock.
Okay, so I have both of them here, so I want to make sure that, yeah. All right. All right, so table, we're gonna amend my motion. Make sure I get this right. Um, I move that we approve the wiring and installation cost for the cameras in Stony Hill Fire Department. In the amount of six thousand two hundred and seventy five dollars uh to come from ARPA funds uh for shock electric.
Right.
Okay. With that, I'll try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Let's see. Okay, uh, next up. Um, I'll say, I'll 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 put it out there for discussion, consideration of appointments for board and commission day. No second? All fair for discussion?
Aye, aye.
Okay, no opposed? Excellent, so. You won't find it in your packet, um. We've had a couple of them come in, but we don't have the full slate. Um, of who we're looking at, and I I haven't had any opportunity to actually call anybody. I just got the ones from, you know, the Democrats here too, I haven't had a chance for them to sit down and go through all of them. So. Since we don't have them all yet, it's prudent to wait till the January second meeting, it's okay to you guys. And then we do it all in one fell swoop. Uh, we don't have a lot going on in the meeting. Motion.
Does fire commission meet before that?
Um, well, well, they're sorry, it's supposed to have their meeting this month and they canceled. Probably can't, so I, I'm I'm supposed to talk to their chair tomorrow. Yeah, but the fire commission will be after that day, so if we put someone on the fire commission, and and we do have. Um, a really good person to put on there. But we have some time. I was talking to the voter registrar and convinced me we've got time, we shouldn't be rushing like crazy, so. Um, I I would make a motion that we table that for the January second meeting. Second, okay, all proved?
Aye.
Call favor, super say aye, aye. Opposed, non-motion carries, okay. Posed, non-motion carries, okay. Um, and finally. Um, I move that we accept a grant from the state of Connecticut to help with training and payment of poll workers, uh, in the amount of. Over here, ten thousand five hundred dollars. Got a second?
Second.
Okay. So, um. Actually, we have the voter registrar right here, would you like to comment? One of.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's, the Secretary of State is going to. Give each town ten thousand five hundred dollars. Towards the cost of early voting. Um, the strange thing about this allocation is that every town, regardless of its population. Is getting the same amount of money. So it's pretty unusual that. This time around, Bethel will get as much money as whatever you hard-fuck have paid in Bridgeport, et cetera. Um, and. What's coming up is the presidential primary is going to be April second. And there's four days of mandated, uh, early voting. The hours will be from ten AM to six PM. And we have to staff it every day, and that includes a, a Saturday as well. Uh, then for the state primary, which is August thirteenth. There'll be seven days of early voting. Uh, and again, the, the times will be ten AM to six PM except on Tuesdays and Thursdays when it's eight AM to eight PM. Um, and then for the presidential election will be fourteen days of early voting. Uh, and again, the same thing, ten to six, daily, except. And that includes Saturdays and Sundays. Uh, and eight AM to eight PM on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And so in a fourteen-day period, it'll be. Actually, now that I know this, the Tuesday and Thursday is only, only the week before. Uh, so there's only gonna be two days that will be twelve hours. Um. We estimate that we could probably use about half the money for. Presidential primaries, and that the other half could be used for the state. State primary, which. Probably use up all of the rest. We have to spend it by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Um, and I spoke to Brad about this, and what he suggested is. Set up this grant as a special fund. By using the right terminology, um, so that. We'll use half the money in this fiscal year and the other half of the money in next fiscal. So, that's about it, um. We're expecting that, well, first of all, for the primaries, we don't know if there's gonna be a single-party primary or. A two-party primary, both in, for the presidential again. For the state primary as well, so that will affect the, uh, the staffing. But again, this, this helps, and then one thing I, I would suggest, I know the state has been talking about. Having the state fund all the early voting into the future. And my suggestion is just say no thank you, but just. Because it will cost the Bethel taxpayers less if they only have to pay for Bethels early voting. Not pay for Bethels and. And the other big cities as well. So, uh, again, uh, be with your legislators. Say, yeah, we'll, we'll pay for our own, we'll do it throughly as Nancy and I always do. And, uh, that's, any questions?
And more.
Is this, is this gonna transfer over to like budget referendums and?
No.
How about municipal electors?
Yes, municipal.
Yeah, so municipal, you'll have seven days.
Fourteen days.
Fourteen days.
Fourteen days, it's, it's the whole planning program for over, yes.
And the absentee ballot doesn't change. You can go by absentee just as you did now too, so.
So they're open Saturdays and Sundays?
Yeah. And. Until six o'clock every day, except on Tuesdays and Thursdays when. We, we'll be here until, uh, eight PM. And by the way, uh, for the presidential primary in April, I've reserved this room. And it'll be. I think back, it's gonna be Saturday, Friday, Thursday, Wednesday.
Is, is there just one polling station, or do you have to open all your?
No, it'll just be here.
Okay.
But then our, our people are gonna have poll books, and they're gonna have to be juggling all the districts, streets, districts off.
Yeah.
So, and we have no idea, I mean, this will be the first time, so we have no idea. What the response is going to be. I mean, a lot of people will still wanna show up on election day, we'll be ready for it.
Yeah.
Tim, can I come in and change my vote if I wanted to, within the fourteen days? Uh, you can, however, if you, if you vote by absentee, you can change your vote.
Yeah. In fact, if you're in town, you're required by law to change your vote.
Lisa didn't like that a couple of years.
And what will happen similarly, early voting. The voters will fill out their ballot, they'll put it in an envelope, and they'll sign the outside of the ballot, or onside of the envelope. So that if that person moves out of town or dies, then that ballot gets pulled and doesn't get counted. Just as, it's the same way absentees are.
Are here. Okay. Uh, and, and to your point, I did have a conversation with the legislators. I had them moving for breakfast at the beginning of last week. I did tell them about this. Instead of saying, you know, I, I, I would say I cautioned them what could happen. I didn't say don't give us the money yet.
Yeah.
But I just said, whatever you do, make sure it's a process where, you know, the larger towns are gonna end up getting a lot more at the expense of Bethels. Residents, like, we can't do that. We shouldn't have to pay more than, you know, for another town. You know, for them to do it. So I did, I did take your concerns forward. Bet. Um. Any other questions about the grant?
Okay. The, to Tim's point, Dan, um, you guys should, in your motion. Um, allow the funds to carry over. Cause otherwise, a grant would be, have to be spent in the one fiscal year. And the timing of the grant, if we get it before June thirtieth, does not give a lot of time to spend it.
Right. Okay. So with that, then I'll, uh, I'll amend my motion, um. I make the motion that we, uh, approve. Uh, excuse me, I make a motion, we accept a grant from the state of Connecticut to help with training and payment of poll workers. In the amount of ten thousand five hundred dollars, um, to be, what do you say, non-lapsing? It'd be used over, uh, this and the next fiscal year?
Yes, non-lapsing.
Right.
Um, because you don't wanna just limit it to just the two years because if it's a continual grant. We'd wanna have an account that we can keep putting it in and then spending it over time.
Yeah. Okay, no sense. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? She carries. So with that, I would.
Make a motion to do it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, hope not. Motion carries. Thank you.